Auckland's North Shore represents a population base larger than that of Dunedin, with 150,000 people living in the area versus like 130 for Dunedin. As a location, it's one of the oldest parts of the country and one of the oldest parts of Auckland. So I was really thrilled when councillor Richard Hills agreed to sit down and have a quick chat with me. At the moment, they're doing everything for the council from home. So as you can imagine, time is very much of the essence. And at the same time, he's busy preparing for a new arrival coming into the family very soon as well. So just to have half an hour to sit down and talk to him was absolutely brilliant. It's fascinating for me seeing how something like a super city like Auckland works differently to other councils around the country. It's our only super city and it represents 1.6 million people. That's a lot of different voices that have a lot of different opinions about everything you could possibly imagine. And Richard's gone out of his way to try and bring on not just a youthful outlook, but a futurist outlook as well. Someone who is looking towards the future and the changes that will get made now that generations down the line are going to reap the benefits of, but are also going to have to pay off. And how you find that balance in there as well is a tricky thing for any elected official to try and get through. So I hope you enjoy this interview. It was absolutely brilliant to sit down and finally talk one on one with Richard. Um, I hope you enjoy what he has to say.
Good morning.
Sure, uh, I have just lost you. I can. Classic.
I would have thought by now you would be like a Zoom expert.
Uh, we use Skype for business for council, which is like living in the eighties. So.
Yes.
It's terrible. We were changing to Teams uh just before the outbreak. So then that got kind of cut short. So what I feel like has happened is that we've got an even older, less upgraded system than we had last year. Um, so we, I drop out all the time, um, all sorts of issues.
Got to be frustrating.
Yeah, I think, I think it was, I don't know, some excuse was used at the beginning that it was like safer, you know, and I'm like, who is breaking into our council meetings to see like important votes on regulatory items? Like, I don't think anyone.
Are your council meetings streamed?
Uh, yeah. So the big committees are, but like all our workshops and all the other small briefings are not. So, um, so yeah, so there's streaming of Skype, which is largely just a black screen with like 104 people participating that you see when you watch the live stream.
You haven't got the, the Waipar District Council fame thing going yet?
No, because we generally, if anyone turns their uh video on, the whole thing crashes. So, um, it's not a great time.
That's not a great setup.
Democracy for the win. Um, yeah, I, I think it was just because, well, I don't think really pre uh COVID last year that there was many, um, you know, Skype meetings. Uh, and I only have used Teams for, you know, offline. Well, we all use Teams, like if I have a meeting with staff or catch up on anything, it's always Teams. Um, but then our official meetings all go through Skype and I don't know why. So.
Cause it's cheaper?
Uh, no, well, that shouldn't be an issue if it's better, but it's just, they haven't got around to figuring out. And I think trying to teach 170 elected members how to use something new is a nightmare for the staff.
Yeah, actually that, that does make a lot of sense. And to be fair, you are the youngest elected city councillor at the moment, aren't you?
No, I'm the second youngest now. So last term I was the youngest and now Shane, Shane Henderson, who got elected in Waikato, the replacing Penny Hulse, he's six months younger, so he beats me.
That's not good. But at the time you were first elected, you were the youngest. So, oh, so you two are pretty much digital natives anyway.
Yeah. So we end up helping all our colleagues with.
So, um, I was, many years ago, when I was working in Hamilton, I was talking to one of the ancient mias that they had. And he had this theory that young people don't like getting involved with politics because they see it as an old person job.
That's because it was an old person's job.
Yeah. Yeah. At the time it's, he, he looked like Mr. Burns. Actually, it was kind of weird. Very, very strange man.
Yeah, that was definitely why I got into it because uh at the time there was only sort of retired people. Not that their views aren't worthy, but to have only retired people in elected positions is not good for um good decision making.
That was actually one of the reasons why I wanted to have a talk to you because uh for 20 years I've seen people try and get youth votes and youth voices around elected bodies and tables. And it's just had no joy whatsoever. But you've been very successful in that. And I'm kind of curious as to what your secret is. Is there a secret to it? Or is there sort of an outlook that's different that made it a bit easier for you to get on there or? Cause I, I realised that your first council vote was very close, like it was, it's less than 200 votes difference between you and the next person. Um, but, but was there like an attitude that you bought into it that, that engaged people more or?
Um, I'm not sure if there was a, a secret to it. I mean, I got elected to the Kaipariki Local Board before the council role. Um, and yeah, I sort of didn't know what I was getting into, um, really. Um, it was the new, it was the first uh election of the super city. And I sort of stood with the team and I think at some point they were sort of like, oh, we just need a younger person to stand and he'll run the the online part of the campaign. And then I just sort of tried my best and yeah, got elected there on quite a short margin as well. But with, I think it was 24 candidates and I was eighth. So I got on um as, as eight. Um, but I guess the secret is probably what all elected members need to do regardless of age is just be a nice person, be genuinely.
I'm gonna bite my tongue there because I've met a few who are not.
Yeah, I know. Or I guess show a veneer of, of niceness. Um, the the, and getting your name out there and being like kind of clear on your values. So I think the first time I got elected on Kaipariki and the first time on uh Auckland Council. So that was 2016. I think both times I kind of didn't expect to get elected and sort of didn't. So my skin in the game was, oh, well, I probably won't get elected. So I might as well just go hard on the things that I find important. And just be like, not worry about like what people are thinking, if you know what I mean? Like, boom. You know, saying something about public transport might be seen negatively or climate change. You just, if you're out there just saying what you believe in, because you're actually. I mean, obviously I wanted to get elected, but I wasn't like gonna ruin my life if I didn't, if you know what I mean? Some people treat it as like a job that, oh my gosh, I better just protect my job forever and not talk about anything that's important. Just like stay safe and talk about the rates or talk about red tape or something like that. And, and then those things are never, you know, able to change anyway.
It, it's been a very common theme with the politicians that I've spoken to for this project. Is that the ones that, that seem to engage best with voters are the ones who don't go into it thinking, how do I win the next election?
Yeah. And I think, I, I mean, that definitely does backfire for some, but I think if you, obviously you think about every vote because uh, you know, you want to listen to the community, but you also, you know, have to do things that are right because I don't want to look back and go, ah, I did that to try and get elected, but actually it was really poor decision making and it wasn't based on evidence and we're in a climate crisis or whatever. So there are definitely, there are definitely things, you know, I, I won't say that. You know, you could put up the rates 20 or 30% and, and achieve a bunch more of the goals that you want to achieve. But you know that, that wouldn't be good for individuals, businesses, households, especially during a pandemic. But that probably would also get you thrown out of office. But I think for me, it's the first thing that's more important, knowing that that would be too tough for people to pay for and too harsh and they wouldn't appreciate what you were getting out of the, the outcome of that. And then you, the secondary thing for me is, and that'll probably get me kicked out. Whereas other people sort of think even the small rate rises that have to pay for the bare minimum sometimes, like the upgrade to current assets. They're like, no. And you know, there's people who vote against uh very small numbers now thankfully compared to when 2016. Um, will vote against the rates, but vote for the budget. So they'll vote for everything and I can't do that. They'll vote for everything and get as much of the spending in place that they want for their communities and then vote against the, the revenue, which is inevitable. Like no one's ever dropped the rates. I don't think in any council, people talk about it all the time, but unfortunately it's the system we are stuck with. Um, and the way we earn income to pay for the things that people go, that's broken. There's, you know, poor water quality or um whatever the issue is. Uh, so yeah, I try and, I think that, that honesty, and I know that's funny for a politician, um, to say, you know, the, the old.
It depends on the politician.
But I think honesty sometimes, I think, you know, there's a lot of people who I think didn't like me or, you know, bagged me publicly and I'll like try and catch up with them or meet with them, sort of tell them the whole process without sugar coating it. And actually some of those people have come back to me and said, look, I don't agree with all your politics, but I think yeah, you make a lot of sense and it's better than just, you know, bullshitting or whatever. So that has kind of helped too, like being a little bit Pollyanna about like, well, we have to spend this money and what's the outcome? You know, asking people what they think they would do in my position kind of can reel out some of that. Um, you know, general anti-council hate.
Do you come across it a lot? I mean, Auckland is obviously huge. It's 1.6 million people. It's the largest population base in the country. It's the only super city in the country. So you have a lot of dissenting voices coming from every angle and every background.
Yeah.
Um, how often do you find people are just genuinely upset with what the processes that council puts in place? Or what council is spending their money on or is, is there often a lot of angst around it?
I think generally there's like the, the, the general anti-council people that probably don't vote and probably don't get engaged. They're just like totally turned off by council. You're probably not going to win their vote. So it's sort of like just appreciating their nasty comment or the, you know, you're all, yeah, I pay your wages and you should listen to me or all that kind of quote angry rhetoric. So that's something that you just deal with. But there's the people in the middle who, uh, and there's the people who don't care at all about it, you know, not in a bad way. They're just like too busy and just like, yeah, just get on with it. Just, you know, as long as the the road has no potholes in it and I can get on the bus or, you know, the, the local parkers moan, I'm not really for, I don't care at all about your decisions, you know?
It's, it's not their priority.
Yeah. But then there's the people in the middle who genuinely care and you're trying to like work out how to make everyone happy, you know, like um, we should be going much harder on climate, uh, the climate initiatives. But then I think about the last budget and we got 150 million, you know, I worked through my committee to get 150 million dollars more um climate initiatives that were, you know, it was the first time we had a climate kind of budget. Um, and it got a unanimous, unanimous support for that. Um, and you know, there are things that I wish we were going harder, but then every now and then I have to look back and go, you know, a couple of terms ago, we had several climate deniers on the council and like you couldn't get anything over the line. So it's sort of like celebrating the wins and promoting them, but also knowing that other people are going to be like, you're useless. You should be doing triple that or quadruple. So it's kind of like that incremental, but big leaps, like it might be incremental in the one year, but if you look back three or four years, um, like on public transport, people say, oh, the public transport system sucks. And then I'm like, when was the last time you took a bus? And they're like, oh, 10 years ago or, or, and it's not perfect everywhere, but if I think even when I was at uni, what, where 13 years ago, um, you know, it was actually more expensive from Glenfield to the city. The buses were um, the pretty, you know, they didn't have air conditioning or they didn't have, um, you know, heating or sometimes the leather seats were pretty disgusting. And that was only, you know, that short time ago. But actually the paper tickets back then were more expensive than a hot card now to the city. And they were sort of every 40 minutes to an hour and pretty unreliable. They would finish way earlier, you know, so. If you look back, you're like, oh, we've got double deckers now. We've got, you know, five to 10 minute services in some places. We've got um, a hot card, which only really came into play about seven or eight years ago. Um, all these different things, but I guess people, I think Anne Hartley, who's on the Kaipariki Local Board, who was originally encouraged me to stand um for the local board, she's always like, people bank things and move on and they just like want the next thing. So it's kind of like always looking to the next thing, but trying to like ensure people know also like what their vote has done and what your vote has done and um, how, you know, how things get built up over time.
So in, in terms of, of the climate committee that you're on, what are the big changes that Auckland Council can make to help deal with the climate crisis?
Yeah. So this term, uh, so last term I didn't really have a, I was sort of new, I didn't have a, a role, um, I guess. So I was just kind of like a interested councillor. Yeah. And this term, uh, I kind of, the mayor sort of said, what do you want to do? And I said, I'd love to have a climate, you know, committee or the, be, you know, Penny Hulse had stood down. So she was the chair of the Environment and Community Committee. And I said, well, and the mayor said, well, what if it was like a smaller um, subcommittee or something? And I said, no, like I think climate needs to be everyone. So then in the end she made me chair of a new committee. So there's now four committees of the whole, which means that the mayor and all 20 councillors plus two members of the Independent Maori Statutue Board sit on that committee. So there's four committees of the whole. I'm the Environment and Climate Change One, I chair. Um, so that's pretty cool. Um, and we uh, first of all, this term, so this term's been since 2019, so it's a three year term. Um, and we uh, first thing I had to do was bring the climate plan through, so Titara Kia Taferi. Um, it's what the name of the climate uh plan for Auckland. Um, we worked in partnership with Manafinau, so the Manafinau Kaitaaki Forum, which is all 19 EWE across Auckland. So probably the first big plan that we didn't just consult with Manafinau at the end or like, you know, just ask them to participate in part of it. They were involved from the start. So um, which was really helpful and really positive, you know, which are quite, you know, obviously there's racism involved, but I kind of don't understand people's concerns with Manafinau being involved in things because they're genuinely just pushing us to do better in the environment space and water quality, you know? You know, heaven forbid we improve the environment because EWE got involved. You know, that's, that's largely the mantra we get. Um, so we uh, the plan is for Auckland overall. So the whole of Auckland, we're, you know, working with business, working with individuals, um, different things. Obviously we need to be leaders as a council. So we're doing things like, um, so from the climate plan, we've been led into the 10 year budget decision making. Um, last year, which we approved, um, no, this year, but started at the end of last year. Um, uh, yes, 150 million dollars with climate initiatives. We, um, which includes rapidly changing up our bus fleet for one. So there was a plan to never buy a diesel bus after 2025. We brought that forward to this year, so 2021. Um, so we're never buying a diesel or petrol bus again. Uh, we will also have 50% of our bus fleet, um, at least, um, zero emissions by 2030. That'll probably keep moving forward, but some of the buses, like the double deckers, um, they're all fairly new. So you don't want to create a situation where you're like getting a new bus, but then just putting those buses onto a different council somewhere else. And it's kind of like fake. You know, you're still creating the emissions. Um, plus some of those, the, even though they're still diesel, they are some of the, you know, the technology is so good that the emissions are far better than, the emission standards and everything is so much better than, you know, buses we were getting in five or six years ago. So there's like a balance of making sure we're not just decommissioning good buses that, and you're creating, you know, wasted um energy. And so we'll be getting, we're basically rapidly getting rid of the oldest buses first and which makes sense. Um, we, we obviously have the mayor's million and a half trees, but we've added another 200 hectares of native forest to our regional parks over the next 10 years. Um, about 11,000 mature street trees will go in in places mostly um south and central Auckland. In Kaipariki where we live, we have the highest pervert tree canopy, so about 30, 32, 33%. Um, whereas in South Auckland, some of those local boards are down like 6 or 9%.
Oh, wow. I'd never realised that.
Yeah. So we have, um, in, on the shore, but specifically Kaipariki, um, you know, from the motorway over. Uh, is that we have 540 hectares of native bush and a whole lot more street trees than um, almost anywhere else. It probably helps that we have all these valleys that were undevelopable at the time and, um, you know, when things were subdivided, they're sort of like, can't build on that. Let's make it a park or let's use my development contributions. I'll donate that to the council. Um, Anne Hartley was uh the mayor of North Shore City in Birkenhead, who bought the Cody Point and Shep- Shepherd's Park and the whole kind of Queen's chain around the coast, which stayed, um, you know, as uh, reserves back in the seventies and eighties, which is pretty, um, you know, forward thinking. Um, but yeah, so a lot of that tree focus will go South Auckland because we want those kids to be, to have the same experience I did as a kid. You know, we've got shady, better air quality. Um, you know, it's a much nicer uh place to walk than through areas which are largely just concrete and dust and hot.
Those are also your more industrial areas around the city as well, aren't they? So, so, so that's in, in a way kind of negating it or trying, trying to create a more positive effect from that.
Yeah, definitely. I think that's the, the key thing for people who don't necessarily understand climate change. I'm like, well, the worst thing that will happen is that you get better air quality, better walk well, that, better water quality. The heat is reduced and, and amenity is better. You know, that's the kind of um thing from there. Also, we're gonna double our recycling centres. So we'll have 24 community recycling centres, including two resource recovery parks in Western South, which is um, construction waste, you know, some of our biggest uh emissions for council are our, the waste component. So reducing uh waste to landfill, you know, some of our community uh projects at the moment, we're getting zero waste to landfill. City Rowlink, um, they had a, they're doing 98% diversion. So only 2% of the waste from the digging and the leftover, you know, materials and everything, um, everything else has been diverted to other projects or being used in um, other ways. So we're just, we're trying to be leaders in that space to encourage developers and construction companies and others to kind of copy us. Um, and so those community recycling centres will also enable people to bring their waste, divert their waste, um, you know, and that can be sold back. A lot of, a lot of what gets taken to those recycling centres is from the inorganic collections and you know, old furniture that can be restored or metals that can be recycled. And, um, you know, those are things that largely go to landfill now. And obviously we have to build more landfills, which is not great. And that, that um, the emissions underground just last for, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. Um, and we wanna, wanna stop that. So those are a few of the things. There's a, as a longer list, we're working with Ormari. Um, there's a Maori um impact fund uh across Tama Kimakato, which will help them, you know, obviously get better energy, uh, waste, um, disposal, planting, whatever that is, and also adaptation. So if they've got low lying urapas, cemeteries, um, and things like that, coastal marai that needs support to protect their assets when we get inevitable uh sea level rise, even if we do our best, we're still gonna get, you know, where we've got a 1.5 target for emissions, but we realise that we need to also adapt our coastline and cities and streets uh for a 3.5 world, even if we try our best, we know that there is a, a high possibility we still have pretty destructive um situations.
Do you think the voters are aware of how complicated and intertwined all of these issues are?
I think some people are really engaged, uh, especially quite a lot of younger people. So, you know, that's what I get concerned about when we, when I feel like we aren't going fast enough is like the, the kind of bleak look that the future may uh be. And you're making decisions now that are going to affect that 40 year outlook. Um, but a lot of people don't understand. I think it's what, a lot of our studies and, you know, with our uh climate initiatives, through the 10 year budget, we had 60, I think it was one of the highest ever, you know, it's a tick box exercise, 40,000 people submit out of the whole Auckland, which is high, but it's not, you know, very good enough. But, but, you know, we had sort of 60 something percent of those who submitted in favour of the climate initiatives, people saying we should go further. That was the same on our water quality. And natural environment targeted rates three years before that, you know, that was telling people we're going to add a hundred bucks uh um a year to your rates. And it was like in the 60, 65% support for that. Because people are really aware those things are important. So everything from rebuilding our tracks to protect um, Cody to improving the water quality across um Auckland, that that got big support because people are aware it's an issue. So I guess a lot of people are just like, yep, just do, just do the work. Um, I'm not too concerned about how, but I just.
We want results. We don't need to see the process.
We don't need to know all the science behind it, but we know it's uh, you know, concerning. So the, um, yeah, I think, I think people are getting a better idea. I think, um, you know, one of the first things I actually said to my support um advisor at the time was I don't want to talk about what everyone talks about is, you know, fires and disasters and storms because that kind of depresses people. But then unfortunately we, four months after I, or three months after I became the chair, we had fires in Australia.
Mm hmm.
Turned everything orange. We had a pandemic, which was largely to be assumed to be created, um, from, you know, taking away uh habitat for animals which end up coming into towns and villages and spreading animal diseases to humans. Um, and then you had floods in Whangare, you had, then this year, you've had almost record breaking um floods across the country, including West Auckland a few weeks ago. Um, and then you had the drought that we had to spend an extra two or 300 million dollars on to try and bring more water from the Waikato, bring on new boas. And so what I've tried to explain to people that the smaller, that, you know, you could put a few hundred million into um, trying to prevent this stuff from happening or we can keep, you know, spending emergency funds. I mean, Newland, I don't know if you remember 2018, there was massive floods and the whole Newland shops went under. You know, that was like a 50 million dollar um fix up job, um, that wasn't budgeted for, uh, 224 million dollars last year for the drought wasn't budgeted for. We just had to switch everything up. The, we're spending, you know, quite a lot of insurance money. We'll be spending QMU in West Auckland. Um, do you remember the, the Ramani car park behind Birkenhead shops that fell down the cliff?
Yes.
So that was, that was during the same time as the Newland um stuff. So all that rain constant for, you know, it's funny, we had a year of extreme rain and then we had two years of the worst drought we've ever seen. Um, you know, so although they're not all technically climate, they're all, there's some that are very um obvious that the change in temperature and, um, you know, the fact you get long periods of drought followed by, you know, we get rain within 12 hours that would normally come over two months. Um, uh, you know, those kind of climate induced disasters which cost way more than the actual prevention. So I get, I, I, I think people understand that much that we need to do some things that cost money to prevent us continually spending emergency budget.
So you've mentioned water quality a couple of times. Uh, one of the other projects I've got on at the moment actually is a series for a radio station in Hamilton on the changes that central government is bringing into local government. And the big one is obviously the three waters amalgamation there. Um, how does the work that Auckland Council does on things like water quality come into play with that particular three waters outcome that the government wants to, to achieve?
Yeah, it's funny. I don't know if you can hear when my emails are coming through, but I can see, please oppose the three waters, um, emails coming through to my um, email. So the other day we actually, I, I guess I'll go through, I don't know which was the best way, maybe what we've resolved as a council so far, but I'll also go through why I think the government's trying to do the right thing and I'm not kind of in this everything's terrible um situation. So the, I guess the, what we've resolved on is that we support the government's intent. Um, we understand why they're doing it. We just don't necessarily agree with, and probably the mayor and others are a bit stronger, but it was a unanimous vote because it's better to be get the parts of, you know, that's part of politics is you don't get everything you want, but you get lots of things you want if you work with others. Um, so the, the intent is, you know, we support the intent of wanting to improve water um infrastructure across Aotearoa. Um, we support the, you know, the need for a, you know, definitely support the water regulator, uh, the economic regulator and the um, Tomata Rawa, the um, basically drinking water standards across New Zealand, because we don't actually have those. Um, until this comes into play. So that's important. Um, and we support, you know, trying to find out better ways to fund and finance water infrastructure. But what we are concerned about is. But what we are concerned about is the governance um around it. So at the moment, uh we have Water Care. Um but what this would do is obviously split the water agencies into four across New Zealand instead of sixty-eight we have.
Yeah, and that's a lot to juggle.
Yeah, and but the governance is a entity that then appoints a independent panel who then appoints the board. And we're saying that one, two, three, and then we would only give an effect on the one. Um just doesn't make a lot of sense. Um and it's too far removed from almost anyone. Not saying that these, and there'd be a lot of safeguards in place, but not saying these people would do anything bad, you know, but it's kind of, you, to have that much distance between the governance and the the people is our big concern. So, you know, there could be a a panel that appoints the the board and that might be good. Um the issue what, and the government's issue, and it's been looked through like standard and pause in the ratings agencies, is that to actually be, have the capacity to borrow a lot more and a lot cheaper, it would need to be completely separate from council. Um it couldn't, it couldn't have any flowback to councils, you know, uh responsibility because then you just can't borrow more money. And that's part of the problem. We are stuck at our borrowing limit. Um we have increased our um water spending over the next ten years by, I think, it's about eight billion dollars. Um and that's still nowhere near enough. We have no, so we're probably the best, and that's not just because we're Auckland, because Water Care is pretty, pretty good. It's shown in the, in the drought, there is issues there, but, you know, we're on every metric on water quality, drinking water, um supply, you know, that sort of thing, we're, we're way up there and would pass, you know, any water regulator kind of um achievements. But the issue is we have no budget or plan for future water supply. So it's shown through the drought, there was issues, but we don't have a plan for, um is it wastewater recycling? Is it, you know, there's no more space for dams, like what, you know, with that eight billion we've just added, that does mean we're doubling our water bills over the next ten years. So, you know, Aucklanders need to know the current, you know, everyone's emailing me worried about the costs. But what we have in the budget now is doubling our water bills within ten years because that's the only way we can pay for the infrastructure and the maintenance and the upkeep. Um but we can only borrow in ten year increments as a council. Whereas uh say an agency that would be set up could borrow over forty years, which makes more sense because you're building pipes in the ground that lasts forty, fifty, sixty years. But you'd never pay a, you know, you're not, well, definitely not now. You know, paying a house back over ten years doesn't make sense. I know we're not, it's very different to a house, a household mortgage. But you're literally requiring one or half a generation to pay for um infrastructure that's gonna last a couple of generations. Um and we just don't have the borrowing capacity because of our debt headroom. But what this agency would enable would be far higher um debt earlier, which means the cost of maintenance reduces over time. Because right now, we kind of have to sweat our assets. And and if you look at places like Wellington, others, they're sweating them till they break literally into the pavements and then they replace them. Um because they have an even smaller rating base than us. You've got the Far North who has seventeen uh wastewater and water supply treatment plants, but all at the end of their life, but they have no money to pay for it. You've got Havlock North, five thousand people got sick and four people died from the water supply. You've got Dunedin, who recently had an issue with potential lead in their water supply. Kaipariki went bankrupt and they couldn't pay for their, um and part of that is because people have kept the rates too low for too long. I mean, Auckland's, we, when we did our water quality targeted rate, that was largely because Auckland um City Council, the old, you know, John Banks kind of era council, um they spent, they pushed out their renewals eighty-nine years so they could keep the rates the lowest possible. Um so it was on the books, but largely none of, some of that, those pipes are a hundred years old in the city centre. They've never been separated like we did on the shore, which is separating the, you know, people don't understand that Auckland City um areas, the Ismais, it's designed to overflow. It's not, it's not an accident when it does. It's actually designed during rain to overflow um into the the harbours and streams. Like, it's not, it's not an accident when, on the shore, there are issues and that we've started to fix them with the water quality targeted rate quite, quite a lot. Um but that is more broken or illegal infrastructure when, when a house is built and they plug the wastewater into the water supply or something like that. Um those are more issues that can be fixed. The city centre is like billions of dollars of work to replace old infrastructure. So so, yeah, so while people are kind of angry at this assumption that the Three Waters is bad, when I actually ask people or delve a bit deeper, I'm like, well, what do you want? Quadruple water um water bills? What, like, I guess what I'm saying is the current, uh what we currently have is not right. What the government's currently proposing is not right either. But trying to, trying to please, um seventy-eight councils, if you include the regionals, but sixty-seven different areas. If you're trying to build a system that pleases everyone, it's, it's almost, well, it is impossible. We're finding, they're finding that possible. What I worry is the government just gives up because it's too hard. And it has been taken over by this anti-Maori type um mantra uh and confusion. And of course, when people put out videos and, the funny thing is, is that National Party had um was looking at this too, because local government has been asking for this for twenty years for support in this area. Um so, yeah, so it's kind of, I'm worried the government's just gonna throw their hands up uh and say, oh, well, this is too hard. And then we end up, you know, not looking at it for another twenty years and we're in a much more dire situation. So, yeah, I'm not quite as adamant as the mayor that nothing can happen and that we need to hold on. You know, everyone talks about, oh, these assets that we've paid for are gonna go somewhere. They're not going overseas. They're staying in place and they're staying, but they're gonna stay as our water supply. They're going to, they might have slightly different ownership, but they are
Putting up the pipes, though.
Yeah, that's what I can't understand. Oh, they're not, they're not gonna give us the money to, I'm like, well, technically, that's what happened with Water Care, but slightly different. I mean, the ownership, we, we don't have direct decision-making power over Water Care. We appoint the board, yes. Um it's a very long process if we wanted to get rid of the board overnight and look at the issues with the CEO, then the issues we found with him. We couldn't, it was kind of like public pressure and, well, he stepped down, but um, you know, and that was probably unfair on him. You know, he did some really good things as well. But um but the, you know, we don't, I think people assume we have democratic rules now. And actually, Water Care, some of what has, some of the positives about Water Care is because they haven't had that, like you're going back to our conversation earlier, having that um politician scared of making hard decisions because of a neighbourhood yelling at them. Water Care are able to go, no, we've got to do this, sorry, and it's gonna cost this much. Or, you know, they come to us and tell us what the water bills are gonna be, but we don't have decision making over that. We can give them feedback. But if they wanted to triple the water bills overnight, actually, we, the mayor and councillors can't stop that under the current model.
Mm hmm.
Um so, so they're at arm's length. We set um general uh guides, you know, we can work with them on the climate plan, things like that. But if I, I I think that the Three Waters would be too far removed. Um but I think people assume we're now sit around deciding which pipes are going in the ground um now, which is not actually true.
One last question for you, because I know you sort of press for time at the moment. Um what advice would you give people to get them through lockdowns and outbreaks and everything else that's sort of been thrown at everyone?
Yeah, I mean, everyone's gonna be experiencing differently. Um I'm a, I'm an extrovert and kind of uh hate lockdowns, but then I've also learned to enjoy them because actually having nights and weekends has been a strange but great experience for me.
You say that now, but you've got a kid on the way. That's gonna stop soon.
Yeah, I know, like six weeks, six weeks away. So it's probably good. Uh last year, I really did learn like, oh, I don't need to be out every night and I don't need, you know, and taking time for yourself is important and exercise is important. You know, sometimes you do get stuck into a routine of just having to be everywhere all the time. Um so now, since my first experience has been, okay, it's okay to sit home on a Tuesday night and watch Netflix or or having a Friday and Sunday off is, is actually a normal person thing to do um and good for your um your health. Uh but I guess how to get people get through lockdowns, yeah, I I guess it's reaching out, talking to, talking to everyone, uh making sure you're checking in on what, you know, how you're feeling. It's a pretty strange situation. As humans, I think we always want certainty and there's anything but certainty with this um situation. You can understand what the government's doing, wanting to keep hospitalisations and deaths to a, a minimum. But at some, you can sort of tell right now, it's bubbling over to like, well, why can't we just do what other countries are doing and kind of letting people die, but but being open and free? So it's a huge gamble for the government right now, but people, there'll be people who are absolutely afraid of opening borders and other people who are absolutely adamant to open them. And, you know, some, some of the people might never have been overseas, so for them, it's not a, an important thing for that to happen. Others are desperate to see family um or whatever else. Uh so I think that is a hard thing. So stop doom scrolling. I think I need to take my advice, my own advice on that. I think people can get stuck in the, the one P M updates and the, the reading stories and the amount, millions of opinions and social media, the anti-back stuff, like keeping off social media a couple of days a week or at least, you know, turning, uh stop looking at that before you go to bed so you don't have the horrific um lockdown dreams is probably a good thing. Um and just, yeah, catching up with people, bringing back some of those things that were a novelty in the first lockdown. So FaceTiming friends and family you don't normally catch up with, um you know, cooking, exercising. Um and just, yeah, trying to focus on the good things that you can control because there's a lot about this of um time that we can't control. So, you know, I keep trying to put out kind of positive things and, you know, yay, we're moving forward. But even I'm sometimes regretting that because it's like, yay, nine, nine cases. And then it kind of backfires because the next day they're higher and sort of like, but it's still okay.
Um the trend is going the right way.
Yeah, the trend is going the right way. And I think the more people get vaccinated, the safer we're gonna be. And and I think, you know, there is more tolerance in New Zealand, I think, at the moment for slowly opening things up and understand, you know, I think, I don't see a case where we turn into Melbourne with massive protests and those sorts of things. We're a little bit like, yeah, I'm angry, but I'm gonna like keep wearing my mask and I'm gonna get my family vaccinated. And it's, I understand why. So there's, there's some good things about living here that I think will continue even when it gets hard the next couple of months. So.
That is brilliant advice. Thank you very much. I want to thank Richard for sitting down and having a catch up with me. As I said at the start of this video, I know full well how difficult it is for an elected official to juggle just everything that they've got on their plate. So I really do appreciate getting an insight into what it is that he's doing and his outlook on things and not just a really large population area, but the population area I live in. So for me, it was great to be able to see exactly what was going on and get an idea of the sense of purpose that he brings to the job. Absolutely brilliant. I've left some links down below so you can check out his Twitter feed because he's very prolific on social media. Um check out his other feeds as well if you get a chance and give him a follow. I think you'll find them really insightful and the best thing I can say about all of his social media is that he is relentlessly positive. And sometimes, when you've been locked up for forty odd days, that kind of positivity is a really big breath of fresh air that we could all do with. Until next time, I hope you enjoyed this episode and I will catch you later. Don't forget, you can now download all these episodes as well on podcasts uh through Apple Podcasts or Spotify. Uh I'll put links for those as well down in the description. Until next time, I'll catch you later.